All right, good evening. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. I know winter break is, you know, for some it has ended for myself and those that have children here. We know it hasn't ended yet, but will be tonight. So thank you so much for taking the time out and coming to visit the Islamic Center of Frisco. We are so excited to have you here today. It's been a while, two years probably, since the last forum that we've had. So we're excited. As you all know, there's a special election that's taking place. And we really want everyone to get to know the candidates, be engaged, you know, make an informed vote, which is completely important. So we'll let you all, um, I think everyone has pretty much settled in. It is being livestreamed, so that's a good thing. Um, just a few rules before we open up. Uh, the candidates will get a three-minute opener, just to kind of tell us about themselves. And then every question will be 90 seconds. And you'll get a warning when there's 30 seconds left. And those are the yellow and red cards that you see over there. So pretty simple, and you'll get a closer in the end. And depending on time and how much time we have left, we might be able to take some questions from the audience. So sit back, relax. Those of you that are watching online, we hope you enjoy and find this informative. So, um, I would like to introduce Sheikh Mubin Gamani. And for those of you that don't know, um, an active part of making what the mosque is today is our president, Asfar Saed. Um, he's in the back over there, just so you all know. And thank you for coming.
We turn off the name of God, the most merciful, the ever-merciful. We ask God Almighty to have mercy upon our community. We ask all God Almighty to unite us as one. We ask that He keeps us away from any hardships, any trials, any tribulations. We ask that He makes our city of Frisco a place where people move to and bring goodness to. We ask God Almighty that He unites us in our different colors, in our different languages, in our different backgrounds as one. We ask that He removes any hardships that line our paths. We ask that He makes... That He makes this upcoming election beneficial for our community. That He gives the candidates guidance, that they're able to guide us and make the right decisions for our community.
Thank you, Sheikh Gamani. All right, I think we can just get right into it, right? Um, so we will start in the order, uh, we did alphabetical order. And that puts us at, um... Hey, it was Saad, yeah. Okay? So you can grab the mic right there. And you can start. You can stand, you can stay right there.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello? Yeah. Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Salaam alaikum. My name is Sai Krishna. I'm running for Frisco City Council. And basically, I'm a, professionally, I'm a registered nurse and also a insurance producer. I've been in Frisco for four and a half years and six and a half years in Texas. I moved in, uh, 2017 to Frisco. And, um, I, since then, I saw, um, like, I wanted to get into the Frisco and serve the community. Being, working in the nursing, like, from a bedside to, uh, insurance industry, I gained a lot of experience. And, um, also I've got a Six Sigma, which we always try to get, you know, good quality of work, uh, what we do, and as well as extract the same thing, uh, when we deliver things. Um, I'm married, I have two kids, both are in a, um, one is in Nelson, my son, he's the eldest, and he's 14 years, and in next year, he's going for high school. And my daughter is also started Nelson, like, she's in sixth grade. And, uh, I originally back from India. And, uh, being in the United States, uh, almost like a 20-year's close to. So, um, I went to school here, which I started my life person a table. I'm very proud to say that because I worked way up to this point today, um, you know, with hard work. And I know, I can understand, I can be in people's shoes. Uh, and also life, working in a hospital setting showed me, I mean, learned, I learned a lot, uh, from, you know, I have seen the birth and as well as the death. And walking in every stage of life, I, I can be empathized than the sympathy. And, uh, being, uh, like, you know, youngster, when I was in India, I was, used to do the lot of charity work and as well as, like, a blood drives. And, uh, I was like, you know, key person in my hometown, um, if anybody needs a blood or if they have to shift to, um, a district hospital. So that has been in my blood, and also my parents, they built a hospital back in India, in my hometown. We are the first one to build a maternity home, uh, in the hometown. So I come from a good background family with, which we can understand. And we have, um, a delivered, uh, you know, a lot of community work, like, you know, giving back to community. And that's in my blood, and also, uh, that's funny, I, I feel that it is in my instinct need, uh, to get, you know, to get into the community and serve the community. Thank you very much. This one.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Rumel, and this is actually my second time here at this wonderful facility, but this is my first time inside. Last time, we had the interfaith Ramadan, uh, celebration outside. So thank you very much for hosting this and giving us the chance to get in front of the community, get in front of, uh, people online, um, especially since this is an incredibly short election, so, with the holidays. Um, so a little bit about me personally, um, I'm first moved to Frisco back in 2002, right after college. Um, and I've spent the vast majority of my adult life here in Frisco. Um, I am a proud Air Force brat. If anybody ever hears me talk, we are three generations Air Force in my family, so we say we bleed blue. Um, and I lived all over the United States with that, also lived in Bangkok, Thailand for three years. So have had the experience of living overseas in a culture that's not my own. And also being very respectful of, uh, all different cultures, religions, um, anything that may come with that. Um, and that's just been my upbringing. Little-known fact, I have a Jewish grandfather and a Catholic grandmother that are married to each other. So that makes for interesting conversation. Um, I am married to my wonderful husband Hayden, who is a saint and is in the back of this room right now, uh, and has been along this campaign journey with me. Uh, we've been married for 13 years now, and we are dog parents. Uh, if you have ever been on my Facebook page, you know I am a huge animal advocate. Um, and we have two, uh, what I call our mystery mutts, um, our, our kids. Um, I recently joined a company called PayPal, which many of you are probably familiar with, where I am Director of Strategic Accounts for them and manage some of their largest worldwide accounts. Uh, before that, I've worked for other Fortune 500 companies-led groups for American Express, Kraft Heinz. Um, I've also worked for some smaller organizations. Uh, if you're familiar with Crossmark, it's a company in Plano, uh, Preston and Legacy, um, as well as, uh, most recently, I was with Pay Near Me, another payments company, small payments platform. Um, so done a lot in the financial technology space, uh, for the last 10 years, but I do have a 20-year professional career, although I know it doesn't look it, I do have it. Um, I currently serve on the Frisco Social Services and Housing Board, something that has been incredibly rewarding to me and have gotten to serve with Sadaf on that, uh, who was our chair for the first year that I was on there. Um, and it's been incredibly eye-opening to me, not just the, the needs of our community, but also the organizations that we have available to us. And I think that's something to maintain and be conscious of, especially in a city leadership position. Um, I'm also a member of the Frisco Women's League, which I have, uh, very much enjoyed, uh, and had been told I should have joined years before I did. Um, and I think somebody in this room is actually who talked me into finally doing it. Um, I mentioned I've already been involved in, uh, animal rescue. Uh, there's actually a 501(c)(3) that I've recently founded. We're gonna hopefully launch it very, very soon. Um, and I ran for this position last year, barely lost in the runoff, so I'm back to try again.
Salaam and blessings to all of you. Thank you guys for being here tonight, and thank you for hosting this. To everybody who's online, who's watching, welcome, thank you. I am Tracy Reveal-Shibman. And I am here with my rock star husband. He literally is a rock star. So if you don't know me already, uh, you wanna at least get to know him, 'cause he's a lot more fun than I am. Uh, I, I actually wanna start this with a question. How many of you have either hired someone as part of your job, or you've hired someone and brought someone in important in a volunteer position, that you've been in charge of an organization, you brought somebody into your home? So how many of you have had that experience before? You've hired somebody, right? Okay. When you're trying to figure out who to hire, what are probably a couple of the top things that you're interested in? Like, what are you looking for? Probably looking for somebody with... Experience, right? And you want, not just experience, but somebody who's done the job and done it well. So that's what I bring to the table. I was on the City Council for Frisco for two different terms, back when we were first starting this community. It's one of the reasons most people have moved here, is because they love the work that we set, the foundation that we set, to build this community the way that it is. Many of you are probably even living in neighborhoods that I helped zone or plan or put green pastures in, open space. My fingerprints are all over this community. And so I wanted to come back and bring my city experience, 'cause I'm the only one right now who's running for this position, who has that experience, that's so important. But I also have that track record of success, where, you know, we've already put, I was on the City Council that put in traffic infrastructure moratorium to try to get ahead of all the multifamily development that was coming in. We reduced multifamily significantly by over a third. I have been on the City Council when we put in a number of the first-time ordinances. And so I have that experience. In addition to my community leadership experience, then I also have a 30-year-plus career in building, assessing, identifying and developing executive leaders. That's what I do for a living. I worked at EDS for 14 years and then started my own company. So when you combine my community experience with my professional expertise, I can hit the ground running in this seat in a month, when we start making that critical decision of who is going to take George Purfoy's job. Because he's the first and only city manager we've had, and the next city manager, and the transition to take Frisco into that next, um, era is something that's really important. My change management expertise is something that I'm gonna be able to use and apply to help with a smooth transition. So that's one of the reasons why I decided to kind of dust off my Frisco pin and come back out and make myself available for the residents and business leaders of Frisco. Thank you again.
Thank you, candidates. Okay, uh, we will get right into, um, the question portion of the program. Um, we will start with you, Sai. What do you hope to accomplish as a City Council member if elected?
This is a great, uh, great question, Sadaf. Um, being in the city, like, within a four and a half years, I have seen, there's like a drastic change happening. People are moving from all over the nation. And, uh, we do have, uh, you know, like, our, our city has been, um, recognized as the best city in the nation as well. So keeping in that mind, we, uh, the people that are moving here, there's a lot of areas we need to think about it. Like, a traffic is going to be the, the critical issue, the challenge, what we are going to face moving forward in the next, you know, five, five years, or like, from now, we already have facing that traffic challenge. And also, the schools are becoming very, very highly recognized, it's becoming like, you know, people like Frisco City, Frisco EST, which is a good part. So, uh, keeping in mind that the critical issue is traffic, because people from Selena, people from Anna, everybody's using our lane. So that is the most critical challenge that what we have, and we need to emphasize on that one.
Thank you, Sai. Laura, do you need me to repeat the question?
I think I got it. So I'm gonna completely agree with Tracy on that. A lot of the infrastructure is incredibly important of what we have in our city. Um, the growth of what we've got coming on in the next 10 years is incredibly important as well. As we build out our city, smart growth is one of my platform topics. And talking about making sure that the decisions we're making today are gonna impact us not just in the 10 years of build-out, but also for generations to come. Um, I think one of the areas where I am different and unique is one of the city's Vision 2020 goals, and was on, because of COVID, delayed, was also on 2021 again, is building an innovation entrepreneurship center. And that is an area where I have some unique expertise, having come from a tech, financial technology startup, working in the startup space, having experience with venture capitalists, having experience with a brand-new organization, what it's gonna take to get them start up. That is something that I think I am uniquely qualified to support the EDC and their ability to make that successful. Um, additionally, I also, and there's my card, so I will end on that note.
Not in the 30 seconds, so... Watch for red, right? Okay.
One of the things that I think, and this is one of those things, everybody's always going to talk about, those things that bother us the most, right? So infrastructure and multifamily and all of that. And so I absolutely have been following that, I, I wanna continue on with the priorities. One of my hot buttons really is this whole idea of work from home. And as more of us are staying home and working from home, how do we support families that are doing that as far as providing some shared services? Uh, how do we enable people with better bandwidth? Because if we are keeping our children at home more often, and we're having to share the bandwidth that's out there, what are some ways that we can incent and get creative? Speaking of innovation, right? How can we get innovative as a city and use actual technology in order to enable our, our residents in order to get more done from the homes that they live in, with their students, with their kids, with their families? So that's one of the things that, that I know I'm gonna be looking for, as well as transparency. I'm really paying attention to how it is that we make the decisions and choices we make in the community. Are we communicating that clearly, regularly, with easy access? I know just doing my own research, and I was there, I'm having a hard time finding documents on the city's website. So I wanna look at the little more ease of access of information.
Thank you. Okay, Tracy, we will continue with you for the next question. Over the past years, development in Frisco has soared. What, in your opinion, are areas which have been overlooked? And is something you would propose development on?
So two things. Wow. I, so downtown for me is still, we have just so lost our opportunity there. And I really wanna make sure I know, we have a plan in place. There was a master plan put in place in 2018. That's now almost four years ago. And there's definitely some progress being made on that finally. Again, COVID shut that down. But that's for me, one of our huge missed opportunities, is, you know, we jump from all the great development down on Preston Road, then we jump over to the tollway, all the way up. But then as soon as you hit that corner on First and Main, it's like you've hit some kind of a time warp. And I think that's unfortunate, and I wanna make sure that that, for me, is one of my top development priorities.
So a couple immediately come to mind. Um, one, I am a, a big advocate for our downtown district. I think that is part of the heart of our community. Um, it's small business, it's businesses that have been around for generations that are important to us. And we are doing a lot to try to revitalize that, but I think there's still, we can do even more to try to help support those businesses. So that, that's one. Um, two, I'm gonna mention Wade Park, ooh, otherwise known as the big hole in the ground, right? So, um, I, I think we had some, we had some missteps where we, as a city, could have probably done some more preventative measures to ensure that, you know, maybe more bonds were in place, more supportive insurance were placed. So we didn't get into the situation that we're getting in. Um, but thankfully, that project is finally moving forward. I was the only private citizen in about a room full of 50 people, um, that were talking about how that project is finally gonna move forward. And I'm very excited to see phase one of that finally coming to fruition. But I think we also had some very good learnings from that on how to not make those same mistakes again, working with developers and working with, um, a partner, but developer and a bank that had a brand-new relationship and had never worked with each other before. Um, so those are two off the top of my head. I've got a couple more, but I do see my flag, so I will yield my time.
I, I totally agree with Laura on, uh, you know, uh, the hole in the ground, which we need to work on it. And secondly, see, when we have something in place, like a historical, we all come from, like, you know, in the back in Asia, we do have a lot of historic, and I come from a historic city. We need to maintain that historical, uh, like, how the city was before and how it is now growing, like, you know, moving forward. We should still have that, uh, the, uh, the downtown need to be preserved as it was before. That makes a huge impact and, uh, impression, um, in the city, in the, in the name of, like, now, when it is like Frisco, we call it, we go to the downtown, it's everything is like, within, within the reach for the residents. So I think, uh, we need to, uh, press the button there, and I can emphasize on maintaining that historical city, not letting go out, like, you know, with the new look. That's also most important for the city.
Thank you. Okay. So D E N I, diversity, equity and inclusion, has become a buzzword. And many are finding success in embracing these strengths. If you are elected, how do you propose to increase participation for the various communities we have in Frisco? Laura?
So I'm proud to say that I was a D E N I advocate before it was the cool thing. Um, I've been doing, uh, diversity and inclusion for over 15 years. Um, and there's something that I wanna make very clear is, 'cause there's a lot of misconceptions about that. And from a business perspective, what I would like to see is making sure that we are, we don't hire for the sake of hiring someone for diversity, but we do make sure that we have the right candidates, we have a diverse set of candidates, and then the right person gets the job. Making sure that we're recruiting from all avenues of different organizations, different universities, making sure that we have the right set of people ahead of time. Um, from a cultural perspective, I am a huge fan of what the Frisco Inclusion Committee has been doing and what they are looking to expand upon. I would love to continue those initiatives, continue to expand upon them. Um, if the funding's there, which I know that's always the hard part, is being able to give them more marketing funds, so more people know ahead of time of what they're doing, being able to participate in it. Um, at one point in time, there used to be a, um, a, a, almost like a world showcase that we had, uh, in Frisco Square. Once it's, eh, once we're able to do that, I would love to bring that back. We actually did something like that in my school growing up, was people would bring food, you would do dances, you would bring songs and music, uh, music from all different cultures, so you got to learn about that. How beautiful would that be for us to be able to host that within Frisco?
That's a great question. Today, we need to answer, I mean, we are addressing it. Being a nation-American, I come from India, and I see a lot of, uh, all of our Asian cultures we value, and, um, we have a great value, and we do, um, respect and we do, uh, adopt that. Even though we are in America, we still, uh, you know, adopted, we have adopted our Asian culture, and we are, um, we are teaching our kids, um, the same way, um, the values and, um, you know, um, additional things, like, you know, costumes, it could be a costume or it could be, uh, the food, ethnic, uh, different, you know, ethnic food. Still, I do see that there is some lacking there, and, uh, you know, uh, like, I'm, I'm raising my kids with the same concept, even though I'm, I'm like, in a political way, it could be different what I am, but I am conservative in my house. I want, like, my kids to grow up, like, in such a way. And like, uh, you know, like, Sadaf also knows, like, how she's rising, and the same way I'm raising my kids too. We are like a bonding, like, you know, we, we have the same cognitive culture, is the same in Asian, uh, Asian region, and, uh, we do, uh, uh, sorry, um, we, we are indulged into it, and it's just like a salad bowl, we are taking everything and we're still keeping our, uh, respecting our values. And, um, you know, as an Asian American, I like to be, like, you know, uh, bring out, like, and exchange the cultural with, uh, you know, uh, in our city.
Tracy, make sure I can see you.
So two things. Well, the first thing is, when I left Electronic Data Systems and started my own company 20 years ago, the name of my company that I chose is Many Voices. And the reason I chose that is because having worked in a corporate environment where we had diversity programs, but we weren't really valuing the unique voices that were showing up in the room, we were checking the boxes off, but we weren't paying attention to the creativity and the unique ideas that people were bringing. So that's why I named my company that in the first place, 'cause that's one of the things I wanted to do in my business, was make sure that I helped organizations truly value the unique many voices coming to the table. Now, what does that mean to Frisco? I think that on our boards, we, in order to get more diversity and unique and inclusion voice, included voices on our boards, we've got to do a better job of going out and recruiting people to apply for our boards. And the other thing I wanna look at is, okay, of the people who are applying, what does our diversity look like? Let's just do an assessment and see, what kind of diversity are we actually getting in the applications? And then, how does that diversity actually show up on our board makeup? I know that a couple years ago, well, hmm, now it's been about six years ago, when we had our last comprehensive plan advisory commission developed, and we went out and got names, out of the 23 people that were appointed, um, there were only three women appointed. And in the previous comprehensive plan, nine years before that, we had seven women appointed. We went backwards when it came to actually creating some inclusion and diversity. So I wanna fix that.
Thank you. Okay. When you hear about something that concerns you in the city, what steps would you take to see that that concern is resolved? Sai?
It's a, it's a great question. Then, I wanna give you this example of what I did. When the COVID started, I did write a letter to the governor, to the mayor, city officials, and also to the other neighboring city mayors as well. I copied them, and I requested them, because COVID-19 lives are very precious in my, in my understandings, my perception. So, once we lose their life, we cannot get it back. So I wanted to be very proactive. I wrote a letter, I asked them to take control of the convention center and to create a mobile clinic with a doctor, with a nurse, with a respiratory therapist, and also patient assistant. I wanted to create a mobile clinic and treat the COVID patients at their house, not to bring it to the hospital setting and contaminate, uh, the whole hospital, and it is gonna compromise with the chronic condition patients. And I also said, urgent case, which are running out of business, please pass an executive order, take control of it, and create, uh, with the convention center, create a temporary clinics and treat the patients there. So this, this was a big concern with COVID-19. We saw the casualty in New York, and I didn't want to see that here in Frisco. God forbid we didn't have any casualty, but still, we wanted to be proactive. So this was a, a milestone for me, that what I did on that day, when the COVID-19 started ramping up.
So I am a big believer in that if you see something that you don't like, work to change it. Quit complaining about it, get involved and do something about to changing it. And I would say that that is something I have personally actively been involved in this past year. I saw something involved in our community that I really did not like, it didn't represent our community very well, and I have been working to do my best to try and change that. Um, I think that is something that we, as a community, have to get better at. If there is something that we don't like, we need to take some better, we need to be more actionable, and we need to be organized and actually work together, that if we see something we don't like, we work to change it. Um, standing by is never going to make the situation better, it's gonna potentially make it worse if we stand by and do nothing. So, um, since I have a little bit more time left, I actually wanted to add on to a question earlier. So one of the things that, as an innovative, um, and working from a startup, one of the innovative ways, ways that we could actually help with the traffic situation is, and work from home situation, is why don't we incentivize these companies that we're bringing to give them incentives for letting their employees work from home, for letting them have flexible hours? We have an EDC, that's what the fundings do to help, is to help encourage companies to come here. What if we use some of that funding to help with that? So that would just be one of my many innovative ideas.
So is the question about, in general, what would you do about a concern? Okay, great, thank you, making sure. Um, one of the things about City Council is that they are representatives, and so we're accountable to make sure that we are representing the concerns of the residents. The, the challenge sometimes is, a concern might be very personal and might not necessarily The challenge sometimes is, a concern might be very personal and might not necessarily be something that represents a region, a neighborhood, all that. So part of what I would do is find out, first of all, is this an individual concern that you have? Is this something that's impacting your area, the neighborhood, all of that? So I'd do some, you know, some investigating and find out. Then I'm also going to find out where in the city would this reside? Like, so which department? Because not my job as a city council manager or council representative to go in there and micromanage as much as it's to facilitate, to find out, how do we take your concern, find the right department in the city, if it exists? If it doesn't exist, how do we go about making sure that then, maybe it's not even a city issue? People are concerned with schools, so that's a school issue. So how can we facilitate and partner with you as a resident, get you connected to the right people, and make sure that your concerns are being taken care of? For me, the other big responsibility then is not just to like hand you over to somebody else in the organization and wipe my hands of it, but to follow up and make sure that your concerns, whether they're individual or collective, are actually being addressed, and what are we doing to follow up on that, individually as well as the city?
Thank you. Okay, next question. What, in your opinion, should the role of council be in development, education, and support for Frisco's cultural infrastructure? And how would you champion the city's current funding stream for the arts and culture? A little longer question, and I'll, I'm more than happy to repeat it as we go along. Tracy?
Well, that's kind of easy, because I have, I have experience with that as well. So I was a part of the council that initially funded and brainstormed on the original Performing Arts Hall. I worked on the Performing Arts PAC in order to make sure that those funds stayed active, that we were able to then do all the research that we needed, to talk to the different performing arts groups. So the plan has been there for a while now. How do we take that into the future? Because the ball is like in the red zone, if you're a football fan, but we just can't seem to get it over the gold line. So what I want to make sure that we're doing is that we have, again, this is a priority that's been on the council list, at least since 2014, if not before. But when you go out onto the website and you click on priorities, it doesn't show you specifically what the progress is to the goal. So that's one of the big things I want to do. We've got these amazing priorities, but it's hard for residents to figure out what's the progress and the milestone against the goals. At your job, you are measured and held accountable for the goals that your organization sets for you, but we as citizens don't always have a chance to figure out and connect the dots. So as far as education goes, I want to make sure that we are clearly communicating to our residents what the goals are around performing arts, and where are we in our progress toward that. And I am a huge supporter of the Performing Arts Center and the other arts groups that are in the community. I have been, you know, for my entire career, and those are all things that you could go back and check my record.
So what, in your opinion, should the role of council be in development, education, and support for Frisco's cultural infrastructure? And how would you champion the city's current funding stream for arts and culture?
So funding is always the challenge. It's always how much, what can we do with the funding that we have available? But I do think there are ways that we can create additional funding that we could then regenerate back into the arts. The Performing Arts Center is a great example of that. We are, plans have been approved, we're hopefully starting to get built, it should hopefully be done in the next four, three years if we're lucky. And we can actually see some funding coming back into the, or back into the city, as that is going to be a city and city ISD funded initiative. So I do think that money could be directly put back into the city to try to help expand on that. I mentioned the Inclusion Committee. I think that is another beautiful way that we can expand on culture and seeing more of what we have out there. Again, that goes back to funding. How can we monetize this? I mentioned the World Showcase. I do think that could very easily be a moneymaker and be something that would then help to fund, turn around, and fund those same type of activities, and we could continue to highlight them. So a lot of these things are very closely tied together. I do think as a city, the responsibility is, we owe it to our citizens to make everybody feel welcomed, for everybody to feel accepted, and do as much as we can to educate the rest of the community on who is living within our community, who are your neighbors? And I would like to see more funding dedicated to that and come up with creative ideas for how we can secure that funding.
Si, do you need me to repeat, or are you good?
Funding, you know, that's the base of money, you know. The, every areas should be treated equally. I don't agree if like, you know, one area has more money and one doesn't have it, because it's kind of a lacking. Cultural, like as Laura said, in a plate, when we eat food, we need to have a pickle on one side, salad on side, like you know, salad, rice, chapati, whatever we use on a dining place, it's like a mix it. So the way, if a human psychology, if you don't have an entertainment, you are bored. You cannot just keep working, working, working like a donkey at the end of the day. You need to have some fun, you need to have some comedy, you should have, you should laugh, and at the same time, we cry as well, right, for sadness. So it's kind of, everything need to be mixed. When it comes to funding, exactly, this is a great question for the cultural. We need to exchange the cultural, like you know, we need to get along with, within the neighborhood, we need to have more small kids or like, you know, exchanging ideas, because a lot of ideas come from the garage. So involving more residents into the city really helps this, and also it develops a lot of rapport, and funding also, it's easy, if anything cultural, we can raise the funds. People won't say no to donate for that. We cannot just be with like, only city has to do that. It's our responsibility, if we want to donate, and if we want to bring the cultural activities on the, onto the stage, onto the platform, it really helps. So involvement, the biggest challenge is involvement. The residents' involvement makes everything smooth. That's what my others.
Okay, thank you. Next question. How do you feel about the public transportation options currently available in our city? Do we have enough? If not, what will you do to increase those options? Si, we'll start with you.
That's a great question, sir. So, public transport. I don't think Frisco needs a public transportation. We are all born here, and I say that Frisco doesn't have that type of business, like people, you know, had to commute to the work like in five miles, like within the radius. Everything is within the radius, and people drive. The problem of traffic, see, there are two things we need to understand. The traffic is causing from not just for the Frisco residents. The first thing, schools are on the parkways, we need to understand that. You start with your coffee, you come out from your neighborhood, and you get into the parkway, it already you are stressed out right there, because you are driving twenty miles an hour, and that, by the time you reach a toll or D and T, it going to, you are going to already stressed out. See, that is where the problems are. The public transport doesn't help in Frisco. This is my opinion, and it's not taking like, after analyzing all these things, what is causing a problem? We need to treat the root cause, not like a superc cause, I mean, the problem. I mean, we have to question ourselves, like, where do, why do you, why do we have to use the public transport? Where are we going? Are we going every day to the mall? Is the only thing like, you know, stone dry mall? Where are we going? Everybody's going to work. How many people are going to stay home and use the public transport? Everyone goes to job, come back in the evening. It is a waste of money. We can carpool, people can carpool together.
Si, we're done with time, thank you.
Sorry.
First off, please accept my apologies for me not getting up and down. I actually had a minor surgery this last week, so it's, I'm moving very slow. On transportation, I found a very interesting fact when I was running last year, is that multiple of the corporations that are here in our community are already providing shuttle services to their employees. So while I don't see it as a city responsibility, I actually see a huge business opportunity for somebody to come in and create some sort of a private route, and get the corporations that are currently running their own type of shuttle service, have them invest in that as well. If we could have something that went up the tollway, down Preston, you know, through Hall Park, down even into the 121 Legacy Hall, that would create a lot of opportunities for people who don't want a car, want to walk if, from certain areas. Our trail system is hopefully going to be connected within the next few years. That's a huge push that I am a very big fan of. So I don't necessarily see it as a city responsibility, but I do see a very real business opportunity for a private company to come in and provide a great solution to where we need it most within Frisco.
Do you need me to repeat the question? No, I have.
Comprehensive plans since 2000 have included discussions about mass transit, light rail, and every time it comes up, the conversation quickly shuts down, because people in the area aren't interested in funding it, and they're also not necessarily interested in using it. And so sadly, without the resident support in order to bring something like that in, it's simply not going to happen. So we have to get realistic about that and say, okay, well, what else is an option? I love the idea, and I agree, that bringing in and incenting a business to make it more of an internal rotation, that's one option that we can be looking at, and that could be community development corporation funding, it could be economic development corporation funding, something that helps elevate the community. But I've also been talking to people, and they're saying that something just fun, like a trolley, something that would take people, because that's the kind of thing I would get on board with, to go from one kind of entertainment district to another, that's the kind of thing that I think people voluntarily would do more of. But you're not going to necessarily get people in Frisco in July who are going to go to Target, and to Si's point, they're not going to go to Target, do their grocery shopping, and then go to somewhere else and drag their bags onto a bus. We are too auto-dependent, and until something happens nationally that requires us to change that model, we're good old Texans, and we're going to stay independent that way, and so we're going to have to find some creative ways to get people to turn those car keys over.
Thank you. Okay, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why? Tracy?
I know, I know. What a good question. I want to ask you. I'm going to, you know what, this is going to sound like such a cop-out, y'all, that I'm going to say it anyway, more green space. I've fought for this ever since I've been in this city. And so I would say, get more creative with the green space that we are preserving, and within the developments themselves. How do we make sure, and I'm telling you, Frisco's done an amazing job already, but I think that we, you know, we were aggressive in the beginning when we laid the foundation and protected what we have, I think we can get just a little more assertive and, I mean, where developers going to go? They love us already. So why don't we go ahead and say, you know what, no, we want even more. So that would be one actual change that I would be willing to fight for.
Si, I will go with you.
That's a great question, too. Today, I think we're having a lot of great questions, which is most important on a daily basis. So, okay, green space, yes, I agree. Second thing, we need to focus on our health side as well. Just not going to work, bringing money home, and then going to restaurant is not our life. Every young adult, I mean, we have, in schools, we only have like a two tennis courts, if I'm not wrong. And if it is, and how many residents we are here, and how are we engaging them? How are we motivating them? We just don't want only Frisco to be a great business place, we need to have a healthy lifestyle in Frisco as well. We need to engage more people in the city, like, you know, once they come back from work, you know, they can team up, they can go to play. This is most important, we are missing this. We are always with all this technology, you know, WhatsApp, Twitter, or Facebook, you know, we need to make sure, like, you know, people come out of the house and go play, get some physical activity, keep their health in a good shape. That's another area that we need to work on. Building a lot of tennis courts, volleyball courts, basketball courts across the city really helps the residents to motivate and engage and keep Frisco City healthy.
So the question zoning ordinances, okay. So what I, this is a dream, I'm realizing this, but what I would love to see from a zoning ordinance is, we have a lot of multifamily apartment rights that are outstanding. For those who are not aware, there's a lot of apartment rights that were granted for a variety of reasons that are still outstanding out there that landowners can build on. In an ideal situation, I am a big proponent of bringing some small format housing to Frisco. My first home was eighteen hundred square feet here in Frisco. You can't find that anymore. I think that house is worth four times what I bought it nearly fifteen years ago. So I would love to see some more incentives into the multifamily zoning that requires that if you build a certain amount of multifamily, you also have to have a certain amount of townhomes, or condos, or small format housing, something that gives other options, not just apartments, but also, and help to reduce the density as well. So I am not against apartments whatsoever, I've lived in them multiple times, actually even a few years ago when we lived in New York City. Yes, I lived in New York City for a few years, we lived in an apartment. But what I would say is that we are, we are creating even more demand for apartments. We have a phenomenal school system, a phenomenal city, but young families can't afford to buy here, so if we can create some more smaller format housing available to them, then they have the ability to hopefully somehow get into this housing market and not necessarily have to be in apartments. Now, obviously, there's a lot that goes into that, legalities, but again, you said that was my wish.
Thank you. Before we continue with this, you should have all gotten little cards to write, you didn't get any? Okay, raise your hand if you need a card to write down a question potentially that we could ask. One thing I do want to remind you all, and it's very natural to do this, these fine women and men are candidates, they are not elected officials. So right now, they can't take care of trash problems or, you know, other problems that are currently existing. So try to ask questions that are forward-thinking, future-oriented, please, thank you. Okay. If you are not elected, what would you do to try to help work on ideas or issues that are important to you? I think oftentimes, candidates run for office and then disappear. We don't want that as people that are voting members of this society, we want to see you continue and do the work that you had promised, in other ways, perhaps not in elected official capacity. Laura?
Well, I love that, because I think I'm a perfect example of that this last year. Obviously, I didn't win in 2020, but I continued to get involved in the city. Like I mentioned, I'm currently serving on a board with the city. I had been advocating for an animal advisory board with the city. They had said they'd prefer it be a private entity, so I said, okay, I'll build it. So I've been working on starting a 501(c)(3). There's some things going on from a political perspective and divisiveness that I've been very much against, and so I've gotten more involved in politics, even in the partisan space, trying to make sure that we quit this diversiveness and try to bring more unity back into our city, actually having respectful conversations with each other. So, and it's something I would absolutely continue to do. I wasn't planning to run for another couple of years after this, after I lost, but surprise, it's same position that I ran for last year is open again, so plans change and we, we roll with them. But I love Frisco, I love everything that it stands for, and I want to continue to help support it.
Yep. In my off time of this, out of like, without, when I'm not on running or anything, like, you know, in my free time, I do do the food drives, and I pay a scholarship for kids from my business. I do educate and encourage people for motivation, you know, kind of things like, you know, engage them in a healthy lifestyle, I do that, and also, I And also, I have on my foundation, which I am working in India. I'm providing some free school. We are working with the government as well to provide, to adopt a government school and give them a legacy of excellence like a school like here. So there are a lot of multiple things I'm working behind this scene.
So I'm going to do what I've been doing for the last 10-plus years. I'm just going to continue to find ways to contribute to the community, whether it's serving on a board, whether it's working directly with city departments in developing leaders and building partnerships. So I'm just going to continue to do that. I will say that in the last two weeks, since I started campaigning, so we keep saying, you know, I've served for 20 years, I'm campaigning for two weeks. So this campaigning thing's new to me again. But in the last two weeks, one of the things that I've discovered in talking with a bunch of people is that the divisiveness concern that I know many of us have experienced on our own, that will be one of the things that, should I not be elected, I will continue to focus on as a resident because it's heartbreaking. I mean, my family is a walking UN. I have one daughter who is Hispanic. I have one daughter who is Indian. My family is diverse, and it breaks my, and we have very political differences as well in our family. And so it breaks my heart to see that happening in the community that I have grown to love and build all these years. So regardless of whether I'm sitting on city council or sitting out in the audience with you, that's going to be one of the things that I really hold and take care of moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to the portion of the program where we take questions from our audiences. Thank you for those that have submitted them. If you're still working on those, you'll see people with the blue baskets. Feel free to exactly raise your hand and give them over to them. I will try my best to ask all the questions. Some that have been already asked in different forms, I'm not going to ask them. And keep in mind, these questions are coming from the audience and do not reflect the Islamic Center Frisco in any way, shape, or form. These are individual opinions asked, the questions that are being asked. Okay. Frisco is one of the least special needs friendly city in Texas. What would you do to make Frisco a preferred destination for families of special needs? And I'll open it up to three of you, whoever wants to go first.
I'll jump in on that. So many of you may have heard of Leadership Frisco, a program that our chamber does. I was involved in that up until campaigning. You have to step down, unfortunately. But that was actually one of the things we considered as our class project and talked about the ways that we could make Frisco more special needs oriented. We are a sports city, USA, but how often do you hear about any sports for people in wheelchairs or any sort of activities that allow for someone who's blind to compete? We don't see them. But a lot of the same sports facilities that we have today could be converted or could be used today. And so trying to do something to try and help bring more of that to Frisco was one of the ideas that we considered. So I've got a whole list of things that we could potentially come up with. And one thing I was actually talking about with a friend today at lunch is we really have one park that goes above and beyond with Hope Park within our city. And having more parks that are more ADA compliant, more accessible, more aware of different special needs, we could do more of those within our city. Having just one at the size of the city that we are, I'd love to see one come up in Grand Park, very similar.
Si, you can have the last word on this one, okay?
Okay.
Okay, all right. So two things. Well, one, so to the point of Hope Park. As we continue to build out, because there are still neighborhoods that don't have their neighborhood parks built yet. And so I think that we look at how do we work and partner with the developers to make those new neighborhood parks coming online more inclusive? So that is the rubberized padding, things like that, changing up a little bit of the equipment itself. We still have opportunity for that. We can also look at how do we, as we reinvest, which is a big, another one of the priorities of council, is reinvestment. Well, reinvestment also includes going back into those neighborhood parks. So that's one thing we can do. I think the other thing is, you know, we have one organization, right? One park, one organization, Miracle League, that offers specialty programming as far as athletics go. And so what can we do to support them even more? Get the work that they do out into the community so that people know? Because again, if you don't have a student who already knows someone involved in Miracle League, they don't even know to take advantage of that. So those are some of the more individual organizations and incentives that are out there. The other thing I would want to look at is as a city as a whole, where is it that we don't have the opportunity for people in our facilities to be able to have easy access? And sometimes it's as simple as if I am wheelchair-bound, and I'm trying to look over a, you know, I'm trying to sign a paper at the, at a department, even in City Hall, you know? Is there a lower table that I can have access to to be able to sign paperwork and see it? So things like that, I want us to check out and see what can we do as a city to be more handicap-friendly?
Si?
This is a very vast area that we need to think outside the box. Basically, here, the psychology is involved, physiology is involved here. Basically, we need to have a well-trained people to handle the special needs kids. Like, it starts from the school, parents, first from parents, then the teachers, then in the city, then in the business level. Like, if, just for an example, if an autism kid, you go to a restaurant, you take to a restaurant, and if the restaurant is playing a highly, with a high volume of music, that kid is going to get distracted. So how do we handle that case? And other people will get upset. We are spoiling their time as well. So like, it's just all teamwork. Everybody has to involve. Everybody has to learn. This is a vast area of knowledge that everybody has to adopt, learn and adapt, and keep moving. We cannot just have, I mean, I agree whatever Ms. Laura and she said, I'm sorry. But the basics, we are forgetting the basics. Basics, we need to press on the basics, emphasize on the basics. Teachers need to be well-educated. They need to be cross-trained as well. And business people has to be cross-trained. City leaders has to be cross-trained. Every area has to be cross-trained when we are dealing with special needs kids, even with their employment as well. Like, employers need to be well-trained, I mean, cross-cultural training. That's what I think.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next question. With the exception of the 2020 general election, voter turnout in Frisco has averaged about 10% over the last six years. What would you do if elected to increase voter turnout so that more voices are heard at the ballot box? And there's a part to this question, but I think we'll focus on this, and then I'll ask it after that. So, who would like to go first? Go ahead.
Nobody will, I will. So yes, our voter turnout for local elections is extremely low. And that has been one of the things that, from a marketing perspective, I have been focusing on even for this race, is just getting out the vote, letting people know that this election is even happening. Number one. Two, I am a voter registrar. So I haven't been doing it because I just feel weird about, you know, registering people to vote for something that I'm on the ballot for. That seems weird. But I, I've been talking to my community that after my election's over, if they want to get registered in the future for Denton County, I'm a registrar. I can absolutely get you registered to vote and help get everybody out. It is something that as a precinct chair, my job is to help get people out to know that elections are happening, make sure that they're aware that there's something going on, help them get to know their candidates. And that is something I would absolutely continue to keep doing.
I think one of the reasons why voter turnout is as low sometimes as it is is because people truly feel like their vote doesn't, their voice doesn't count, their vote doesn't count, especially if they are in a part of the community that doesn't always get representative or doesn't feel represented. And again, to be real honest here, team, I think for a few years, Frisco, the divisiveness that's happened is there's a significant portion of our community who feels like it doesn't even matter if they go vote because they're going to be outvoted by certain voter blocks in the, in the community. And so one of the things that I want to do differently is I do want to go out and meet with neighborhoods that maybe don't have quite all the muscle that other neighborhoods have, but help them recognize that they matter too. That, yeah, maybe they only have 100 homes in their neighborhood, or maybe it's 500 homes, but so far only 100 are registered. That they can make a difference in Frisco. That's, that's what makes Frisco so special, is because everybody can make a difference. But I think people have been disenfranchised and have felt left out. And quite frankly, I think that that is on me as a city council representative at large. We don't represent just one neighborhood or one region of Frisco. We represent every resident, whether they are registered or not. We represent residents, not voters. And I think that's part of why people have stopped voting because they don't think that they matter.
Si?
Okay. In my view, I always am a social dog. I am always with people. So if we get elected, I mean, anybody, I mean, if I get elected, I'm going to be every week, one day dedication in the neighborhood, talk to people, listen to their concerns, bring that to the city, and find a solution. It is not about just like, you know, getting elected, putting a sign on the street, getting elected, okay? Lawyer turnover, so whoever wins, that's, that's not the way. I mean, the election, the representation is completely changed during this, like, you know, from like a past years. City has been grown, you know? Earlier, it was like a very small town. Everybody used to know everybody, so it was easy to communicate. Now, city has grown very vast. So our involvement, like, as a leader or a representation, when we represent the community, we had to be in the city, in the neighborhood most of the time, ask, listen to them, like, talk to residents, ask them, like, you know, have it, just like, I mean, in the morning, like, you know, the first thing in the morning, it's going to be nice, or in the evening, in the afternoons, like, you know, we can make, like, I have some ideas, like, you know, what I always try to be in the neighborhood and talk to people, listen to their concerns, and bring it to the city. That's most important. Walk in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So we got a question that came up multiple times, so I'm going to ask it. But what do you all think is the biggest threat to Frisco? Who would like to go first?
I can go again, I've gone first multiple times.
Want to go?
I have an answer.
Well, our answers might be similar.
It probably is.
So we've already talked about it. For me, it is, it is the divisiveness. It is the neighbor against neighbor. Just looking at like on next door or going on social media and seeing how people from behind their screen can get so ugly with one another. And yeah, it was different, you know, when Frisco was small, but we had social media then, and people got ugly. So, and you did knew who each other was. So for me, that's the biggest concern. And I think that it's going to take one neighborhood at a time, people reaching out and getting to know one another, and having events that celebrate how we are all different instead of being afraid of each other. So that's one of the things that I think is the biggest threat to the community. I think, to be honest, Frisco, the other thing, I can't see this thing yet. The other thing is Frisco's success attracts attention that we may not necessarily always want. And yet, I feel very confident in the preparedness plans that the city has put together so that should anyone decide to target our community because we are so successful, we've got a really good plan in place. So at the city level, I feel really good about it. At the individual level, I think we have some work to do.
Again, it is all about the engagement of the community, neighborhood. We need to engage people. We can, like, you know, you feel that, like, what are they going to do? They come from the work, they just want to relax on the couch and see what is going on, and then they just start typing it, whether they know it or they don't know it. But they want to put a statement there. So this is what, this is what's happening right now. So instead of that, if we have some kind of, like, you know, engagement within the community, like a neighbor, like, you know, you made a great point that neighbors doesn't know neighbor. So why is it happening? Nobody cares, right? You, I get money every other week, I get deposited, I have a lavishest car. Whatever I want to buy, I can buy, I can order food. The food comes to my door, I don't go anywhere. I don't have any time to, I mean, I don't want to go anywhere. So this is what's happening. So instead of that, if we can drive in the neighborhood, drive means creating an event, engaging people, knowing, like, you know, letting them know their neighbors, their next-door-street neighbors. This is what we need. That is what is going to develop a good rapport within the neighborhood. And that is also a city, you know, responsibility to make sure that, you know, all of our residents are happy, living happy. That is, it's a hard work, but we can make it happen. It all depends on what we are going to bring onto the table.
Okay, thank you. Another question that we got multiple times. Do I get? Oh, you always go first, my apologies.
Sorry, type A personality. I have said numerous times that I think extremism is dangerous, no matter what form it is. So, but extremism is also sometimes the loudest. That does not necessarily mean they are the majority. So if we hear extremism in our city, we can't automatically assume that that's the same perspective that everybody has because it's not. In fact, I would say the large majority of people don't have those viewpoints. So when we can actually sit down with each other, talk, find our similarities, and be able to bond over what our commonalities are, we've talked numerous times about the Abrahamic faith and how much in common we have. I went to a temple this past week and heard a beautiful ceremony. And they knew I was a Christian, knew I was visiting there just to learn more about them. And they even had very wonderful comparisons about their religion against Noah and Jesus. And it was just a beautiful recognition of the fact that, yes, we are different religions, but a lot of them have a lot of same similarities. So if we can push out that extremism, not assume that just because someone's an extremist, everybody is an extremist, and come together and try to find our similarities is the way that is going to move that threat out of our city.
Thank you. And sorry about that, Laura. Okay, so as I was saying, another question that has been asked multiple times. We understand that serving on city council is a volunteer role, and we thank you for your servant leadership. What could be done to prevent a situation like this where a council member steps down less than a year into the role and costs the taxpayers to have a special election? Will you commit to your full term preventing an unexpected cost of a special election?
All right, type A kicking in, especially because last year I ran. Yes, I would finish the entire term. I would have finished it last year, had I gotten it last year. So I do think there are very real reasons why someone may have to step down. There are situations in life like, you know, your job requires you to move. You have a family emergency where you have to go home and take care of an elderly parent. So there are very real reasons why someone might have to step down. In a situation like this, there's obviously room in the city charter to be updated so that we could do something that would have prevented something like this. I do agree, I read the charter. I do believe the decision was the correct one based on the laws that it is today. But there is more that we can do from a local and state level to lobby to make sure that we don't have something like this happen again.
So I've been running, this is the third time I'm running in the Frisco City. I didn't give up because I want to meet my instinct needs of hunger to serve community. So before, before I made a commitment in 2020, I took, like, it was a great, I mean, a strong decision with the family life and with my business and, you know, dedicated time. As I said earlier, I'm a social dog. I am always, my wife always says that, you know, you should just buy another I am always, my wife always says that, you know, you should just buy another RV and you leave in that RV rather than living in the house. That's what she complains. Because people call me, even at nights, to, like, I'm not a doctor, all right? I cannot do anything, I'm not a life saver, but the moral support, what my people get when they call me and then I go to their house, that's the biggest thing for them. So I made a clear decision that this is my path. That's why I'm consistently running, this is the third time I'm running. So, you know, I mean, like, you know, anybody who's consistently running means that he has a strong dedication, so, I think.
So the short answer is yes, I would be quite willing to commit, I am committing to completing the term. And then the longer answer is, my track record speaks to that. I have lived in Frisco for almost 27 years. And I was volunteering, volunteering in Frisco before I even lived here. I lived in Plano, and I would drive up here to volunteer. So I've been committed and dedicated to serving the residents of Frisco for more than 30 years. And I have served on the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Commission as the vice chair. I've served on Visit Frisco's board. I serve on the Parks Naming Committee Board, which is hot fun, that's a lot of fun. And so I've been involved in the city since the day before I got here. I have absolutely no intention to use the city council position as a stepping stone for some other higher office. I understand aspirations, and I think Frisco, because we're so successful, is a hotspot for people to come in and want to springboard to something else. I think that says a lot about the foundation that we've laid, that people want to use it as a stepping stone. But my record of staying here and serving you, I think speaks for itself, that I would not use it to try to do something bigger and grander. To me, there's nothing bigger or grander than serving as a representative of the city of Frisco.
Okay, thank you. It is 7:21, and we do have more questions. However, we do want to be respectful of everyone else's time. So I can send those questions to you, you know, at some point, and perhaps you can relay, you can answer those, and we can relay those to the community here. But thank you for those people, everyone that submitted questions. So we have one final, really quick question, and then we'll let you all just wrap it up with a closing statement. Tracy, top three places to visit in Frisco?
Besides the party bar in my backyard? I'm going to say the National Video Game Museum, it's just my favorite, favorite fun spot. It put Frisco on the map. I'm also going to say, if you haven't been yet, to the Hall of Fame Museum, the Soccer Hall of Fame, talk about national recognition, that's my other favorite spot. And then, gosh, my other favorite, well, my personal favorites. For people coming into town, then, I mean, I'm just going to have to say the Star, because people just, I mean, it's just the coolest thing, even if you are a Chiefs fan, you can still like the Star. So for those of you who know me, know that we had a bad weekend. But we're getting over it. So yeah, so the Star, National Video Game Museum, and what was the other one? Oh yeah, the Soccer Hall of Fame, yeah, so, you know, those are my fun things.
Laura?
I would definitely agree with the Star, and I took my Giants fan boss there one time. That was entertaining. But even he was incredibly amazed by the Star and what it, what has come out to it. I'm actually going to go a different route though, because I am a big foodie. So I'm going to throw out DeeDee's Downtown, just because of amazing food, amazing drinks, amazing atmosphere, great bands. And then I'm going to throw out Cookie Society. If you have not tried them yet, oh, you are missing out.
I'm not a big fan of Cookie, but I'm a foodie guy, okay? I love food. I'm a vegetarian, but I like to try all the vegetarians. So I love it. Star is always a star, so there cannot be change enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Now, we're going to have two minutes each for y'all to do your closing statements. Si, since we started with you with the opener, Tracy, we'll close out with you, Laura, and then Si.
Just for the record, Cookie Society is owned by a former Chiefs player. I'm just putting that out there. The greatness that happens, okay. So thank you all again, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for caring so much. I mean, all of us had probably something else to do tonight, and yet you took the time to be here. So thank you for that. If we rewind all the way to the very first thing, my question for you is, what is it that matters to you when you're trying to hire somebody for an important job? And we all said experience, and we all said a track record of success. And I bring both of those things. My website is friscotracy.com. On that page, what you can find or will be able to find soon is my whole experience, plus we have the sheets back there, of everything I have served and done here in the city of Frisco. But I don't, I'm not just relying on my track record of success because I also have been listening, and I've been watching, and I've been living here. So I have dreams for moving Frisco forward as well. And so it is about building up that future on the foundation of success. That's what I will bring to the city of council, to the Frisco City Council. And my primary dedication is, as it has always been, to be that voice for the residents and the business leaders of the community. And so that's one of the things that you will get with me as a city council representative, because I'm the same person I was when I first served. That was, that was important to me then, it's still important to me now. And yeah, there are more people, but there's great technology that allows us to connect in ways that we never could. So I want to make sure that you feel as if you have someone sitting on council who has an independent mind, isn't necessarily going to look up and down the dais to see how everybody else is voting, because I've been here long enough to be able to kind of stand my ground and take your ideas forward without necessarily feeling like I had, I had to check in with anyone else. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you so much for living in this amazing community.
Yes, thank you again for everyone who's participating either online or here in person, people who actually care, thank you. Thank you for getting to know your candidates. I would also say, so the Chiefs fan, that's my second favorite team, because I am a proud Texas Tech alumni, and so I do favor Mahomes. But executive MBA from SMU, I have worked with some of the largest Fortune 500 companies. I've negotiated deals with some of the biggest organizations out there. So I have the professional experience. I've spent the last two years going to city council meetings, going to working sessions. As I mentioned earlier, there was the giant hole in the floor that everybody's been talking about for years, but I was the only private citizen that went to that working session to hear what was going on, how are we looking at developing it, what were the challenges that were going to make us to help us move forward? That's not the only working session I've been to. I've been going to the strategic sessions. Those are not things that you can watch online. You have to physically be there to get the context as to what's going on. This is not something I have taken lightly. Like I said, I decided to run last year. I didn't give up, and I didn't disappear last year when I lost. I've stayed involved, I am committed to Frisco. And my website is lauraforfrisco.com. I am on Facebook, I'm on Twitter, I'm on Instagram. Not going to lie, I'm not very good at Twitter, but learning. But please join, check out my priorities on lauraforfrisco.com. I've got a lot more details. If you have a question that did not get answered tonight, please reach out to me. I answer every single email that comes my way personally. It's not somebody on my team, you get me. So you get my answer of what I think is going to happen, and I promise, if I don't know the answer, I will find it out. Had that happened last year, somebody asked me, what was I going to do about the rats in Frisco? I had to research, what was the rat problem in Frisco? But it's something that I will always be an ear and someone who will listen for everyone. Regardless if you vote for me or not, I will be your representative and I will support you.
First of all, I want to thank you for ICF president and moderator, Sadaf, and also Sabaias, so coordinating all these things. It's not an easy job to coordinate and bring, you know, people under the platform and the candidates, giving us an opportunity to introduce ourselves and our ideas, our values, what we are going to bring to the city on table. I really appreciate that. And secondly, I kindly request everybody to exercise your fundamental right to vote and, you know, to vote for the right best person you think out of three here. But I also ask you at the same time, give me an opportunity to be your voice in the city and to bring the change, and I am with you. I will walk, I promise that, I will walk in your streets, and you can make one phone call, I will answer your call. And then even email, and I don't have a time barrier, my wife has permitted me. So I'm telling you honestly, we don't have that barrier. I have dedicated myself, and I kindly request everybody to step up and vote. And whatever you think, you make a decision, but still, I want to be your voice. So I have my website, wotsychristian.com, and I've been on third time, and perseverance, consistent, and it's in my blood. I don't give up. So please, please vote for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates. Can we get a round of applause for them? We truly, truly appreciate y'all coming out tonight. We're just going to have final words from another board member, Mr. Tameen. Can you please come up, say final words of gratitude, and again, thank you all for your time?
Thank you. Great questions and great answers, thank you. I would like to thank, on behalf of the Islamic Center of Frisco, the board, and my interfaith team, and the Frisco community, all three candidates for coming over here, attending this great night, and then all of you here to make time to ask questions. And online viewers, I would like to thank you all as well. And I also wish you good luck for the upcoming elections. And if you want to watch the recording, we have a recording available on our Facebook as well as on YouTube. Please go ahead and watch Islamic Center of Frisco, you can Google it, or you can Facebook, you can search for it. And last, but not least, but don't forget to vote on January 29th. I think early voting starts early, so please go out and vote. Now that you heard, 12th is early, but 29th is election date, right? So that's what it meant, so thank you. Please go ahead and vote, exercise your vote. Thank you for coming and have a good night.